Then we do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. The Board and School District would like to welcome any and all guests here tonight. We have a number of student presenters, which is always a highlight of our meetings. Tonight is the last regular Board meeting of the 2023 calendar year, which means our agenda is quite full with several time-sensitive items. One of the key tenets in our strategic plan is to explore multiple perspectives, practice civil discourse, encourage empathy, create interpersonal connections, and embrace diverse identities. As a Board, we wanted to share this with our guests in the hope that as adults we model for the students of this district what civil discourse and embracing multiple perspective looks like. This shared understanding will enable us all to complete the important business of the district for the benefit of all our students. Thank you.
I would like to propose a motion to our agenda tonight. Because we have so many things on the agenda, and that includes our truth and taxation audit review, I propose that we limit the community comment to 30 minutes pursuant with policy 206. If all speakers help us out and adhere to our three-minute rule, we will be able to have nine speakers. And then any community member who would like to share something with the Board but is unable to because of time capacity tonight, we invite them to email the Board, and I can assure you that all of us read all of our emails that we receive. Therefore, I would like to make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor approving the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is passed. We're now going to move on to approval of our agenda for the night. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, will you please review tonight's agenda with us?
Absolutely. As Director Green said, we have a full agenda tonight. We have our truth in taxation public hearing that we'll go into recess for in just a moment. We'll have hearing from members of the public, several consent agenda items. We have information about our audit for finances. And we'll be taking a look into the budget forecast for future years coming out. Our Legislative Action Committee, including several of our students, are here to speak this evening. We are going to go over secondary course approvals. We heard that at work session last time, and they're bringing this for discussion. We have several policies that are coming forward. And then when we move into action, we have the certification of our property taxes. We have several policies that are coming up for final action. And then, of course, we have leadership and committee updates and my updates. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Next on our agenda is our excellence in action portion. And tonight, we have three outstanding Board members who have served the Board for multiple years. And this is their last Board meeting. They're rolling off the Board. So I would like to take a moment to recognize Board Director Julie Green, who's our Vice Chair, Regina Neville. There you are. Thank you. And also Janie Shaw, and thank them for their contributions to the Board, their years of service to the students of the District of Edina. And I would like us all to give them a round of applause and thank them very much.[282.39][282.39][applause] Thank you, everyone. We are now going to move the Board into recess for our truth and taxation hearing. The Board is now in recess, and I'd like to invite up Mert Woodard. Director Woodard.
Just waiting for our PowerPoint. Good evening, Chair Allenberg, members of the School Board, Superintendent Stanley, enthusiastic members of the public with us tonight to hear about taxes. Great to see a good crowd for this topic. Tonight represents a very unique time in the school district calendar where we are looking at three separate fiscal years in great detail. As Chair Allenberg mentioned earlier, we'll have our fiscal year 2023 audit results presented later. We're obviously operating the 2024 fiscal year. And later tonight, the School Board will actually approve about 35% of next year's budget in terms of revenues. Tonight's hearing will allow the school district to fulfill several of its obligations as a taxing authority, the first of which is to hold a public hearing between the dates of November 25th and December 28th. The meeting must be held after 6:00 p.m. The second is a presentation of our current year budget, as well as taxes payable in 2024, and also allowing for a period of public comment, the public comments specific to taxes payable in 2024. Our hearing agenda follows directly from the statutory requirements. Again, some brief background about school funding, a brief overview of the district's property taxes payable in 2024, a very brief overview of the district's current budget, and again, that opportunity for members, tax-paying residents of the district, to address the School Board specific to property taxes. Before we get into the actual taxes, it's super important to take this opportunity to mention that state funding is extremely regulated, not only the funds that flow directly from the state, but also local property taxes. All of the revenue formulas and various authorities are written into statute. The vast majority is based on student enrollment. So as your enrollment grows, all else being equal, your funding will also grow, and vice versa. If you begin to decline in enrollment, your revenues will also decline. The state does allow school districts to generate additional authority above and beyond what it receives from the state via voter-approved levies, operating referendums, capital projects levies, and school building bonds. However, the state also caps what we can generate in terms of operating referenda and capital projects levies. So while Edina does benefit from an extremely robust tax base, we have caps on what we can generate from our local tax base. The basic general education formula is the primary funding source for all school districts. In Edina, it's about 44% of our total revenues, which is actually quite low when you compare to surrounding districts who may be in the 55% to 60% range. For fiscal year '24, the state appropriated an additional 4% above and beyond the $6,863 that we received in fiscal year '23. For fiscal year '25, we're receiving an additional 2% above that 4% for this year. While those are healthy increases over the last 20 years, as you'll notice on the next slide, state funding has lagged behind inflation. In fact, it's lagged quite dramatically, so much so that the state did actually appropriate additional funds for fiscal years '26 and beyond. The funding formula will now be tied to inflation with a minimum of 2% added each year and a maximum of 3%. I like showing this slide at most of my finance presentations. There you can see the gap between what the state has appropriated over the last 20 years and what actual inflation has been. The difference is about $1,400 per pupil unit. Translate that to Edina's enrollment, and you're looking at about $18 million of additional funding. So over time, school funding will not meet inflation, although the state has given us that 3% cap for fiscal years '26 through '29. There are doubts whether or not that will be enough to sustain our funding. I'll briefly review our fiscal year 2024 budget, which is the current fiscal year's budget. This is different to some of the city or county presentations you'll be seeing this month, where those folks will be approving their current budget as of January 1st. Their fiscal year starts with the calendar year, whereas our start's on July 1st. The school district is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and state statute to account for both revenues and expenditures in the various funds that you see displayed on the screen right now. The vast majority of our funding, about $154.4 million in revenues and $149.4 in expenditures, lie in the general fund. That's kind of the backbone and the guts of the school district. This funds our regular instruction, special education instruction, transportation, administration, utilities, and liability insurance, among many other categories of expenditures. So that's about 75% of the district's budget. The food service fund accounts for the meals served to students on a daily basis, both breakfast, lunch, and à la carte items, and the corresponding revenue that comes from the state, federal, and local students. The community service fund is a fee-for-service fund, which houses many of our excellent before and after-school programs, such as Kids Club, Wise Guys, Youth and Adult Enrichment, early childhood, family education, and many other programs. Our building construction fund is used to collect the proceeds of bonds and pay-as-you-go levy authority, and that's offset by the expenditures that are used to build buildings and complete deferred maintenance projects. That fund in particular, you'll notice, has a great excess of expenditures over revenues. That's simply a timing mechanism. We receive funds in one year, and in subsequent fiscal year, we will spend those proceeds until projects are completed. So that's completely normal. Finally, we have our internal service fund, which is used to collect the premiums paid by employees for their dental insurance and also the district's contribution, and that's offset by the premium and administration fees that go out to the carrier. The following slide is a breakdown of our general fund by general sources. As I said earlier, about 35% of our funding comes from local property taxes, which is quite high. Most districts are in the 15% to 25% range. So we're quite reliant on our local tax base to create additional revenues. We're very grateful for that. Again, the remaining portion is from state aids, 44% of that from the general education formula, and the rest from our special education and other funding formulas for about 60% of our revenues. A further breakdown of our general fund revenues by actual revenue-specific authority, as I said earlier, about 43% to 44% from the basic education aid. And then our special education aid makes up the remaining bulk of our state aids. Operating referendum, local optional revenue, the technology levy, and other levies combine for that 35% that I mentioned earlier. On the expenditure side of the ledger, you'll see a breakdown of expenditures by type, or as we like to say in Minnesota, by object. So these are very specific expenditures, such as salary, computer devices, pens, pencils, fuel, anything you might imagine a school district would pay for. It's no surprise that staff compensation actually makes up about 79% of all of our expenditures. That's the combination of the actual salaries, as well as benefits, health benefits, social security contributions, so on and so forth. So about 80%. Any changes to this category would obviously have a significant impact on the school district's financial outlook. A different breakdown of the district's general fund expenditures is by program type. These programs are categorized as elementary and secondary regular instruction, special education instruction. Those two categories combine for about 62% of all expenditures, which is expected. The remaining categories, such as sites, buildings, vocational education, instructional support, make up the remaining portion of our expenditures. You'll note that administration and district support make up only about 4%. So this district's doing a great job of maintaining enough services at the central office to run the district, but no more. That brings us to our proposed property taxes payable in 2024. So those receipts will begin in May of '24, which will fund the subsequent fiscal year, so fiscal year 2025 revenue. Overall, we're seeing a $3.6 million increase to our property tax levy, or about 5.26%. That's a slight reduction from last year's 9%. So while we are adding money to the general fund, it is a lower increase than the prior year. And we'll get into some of the reasons as to why that is on subsequent slides. $3 million of the increases in the general fund will support ongoing operations in our classrooms. The community service fund and debt service fund also see some modest increases. A detailed breakdown of all 31 revenue categories, which require about 5,000 different formulas from the state, is provided in your board packet. I won't get into all of those today. I will touch on the four major increases, though. The first of which is our operating referendum. That's one of the mechanisms school districts have to create additional revenue above and beyond what the state supplies. So that's about $20 million in our budget. We're receiving about $2,197 per pupil unit, which is a 5.37% increase from the prior fiscal year. We're also seeing a 14% or $1 million increase to our capital projects levy. That funding source is used to support technology throughout the district, be it staff, student devices, staff devices, and infrastructure purchases. That levy is the only levy category that's actually tied to our tax base. So as our tax base increases, that levy category will increase in direct proportion. Our other post-employment benefits is seeing a massive increase from the prior fiscal year. This is a timing issue. There were some expenditures that were not recorded at the time of levy certification last year. Those have been recorded and adjusted for in the subsequent year. So we'll receive the money that we should have received on our pay '23 levy and pay '24. These levy categories are always adjusted up to two years following certification. So there will always be a number of adjustments when we certify our levies. And finally, our long-term facilities maintenance. This is used to fund building deferred maintenance projects throughout the district, be it building envelope, roofing systems, mechanical systems, boilers, electrical units, et cetera. That's seeing a planned 10% increase. Next is a graphical representation of our levy history over the last 10 years, as well as our enrollment. You'll notice right in the middle of the page there, in 2021, there was a massive decrease in enrollment. That's due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Most school districts in the state of Minnesota and across the country saw a similar decline. However, not all have rebounded in the way that we have. We've got very stable enrollment at this moment, so we're glad to have rebounded to actually be beyond pre-pandemic levels. Over the last 10 years, our levy has increased by about 6.4% on average, and over the last five years, about 5.1%. So the 5.26% increase that we'll see for property taxes payable in 2024 is right in that range, so nothing out of the ordinary. The following slide is a representation of our tax base and how that's grown over the last 10 levy cycles. Over the last 10 years, our property tax, both on a referendum market value basis and that tax capacity basis, has increased by an average of about 6% year over year. That's important because as properties grow, that mitigates the impact on taxpayers. So if all else is equal and the property tax base is improving, you'll get a lower slice of the pie, so to speak, of the tax pie. Of course, in reality, we know that assessed values will also increase. However, the tax impact is still lesser than it otherwise would have been. So it's important to note that our tax base is growing and robust, and that's a benefit to all taxpayers in the district. Several factors can affect the ultimate property tax bill of a taxpayer. Those include changes to their individual property, changes to all other property valuations within the district, and also changes to the levies assessed by the various taxing authorities upon the properties. So in this district, we have, of course, our school district property taxes, city of Edina property taxes, the Hennepin County property taxes, and there are also some other special taxing jurisdictions as well. In the past, the state of Minnesota used something called a mill rate, and we've since deviated from that structure. That's basically if the school district's taxes went up 5.26%, your own property taxes would also go up 5.26%. Many taxpayers still believe we use this system. However, it's been a very long time since we have, and it's important to note that. The following slides will be an example of how property taxes actually affect a homeowner. The examples include both flat property value, so the house in one year will be the same in all future years. Another example is an 18.3% cumulative growth over four years, and we'll kind of examine the different scenarios. So the first scenario is no change in property value. Excuse me? You'll see on the chart that in all of the various property classifications and values, taxes actually go down on that value, that property value, if the property value stayed the same in all of the years. Again, in reality, property values are always increasing. However, if a home was worth, say, that $750,000 in one year and it's $750,000 in the next year, that homeowner would see a corresponding decrease to their school-based property taxes. Again, over the last four levy cycles, the example again is the same, no change in property value. The home with a $600,000 property value and a home with a $750,000 property value would see decreases to their school-based property taxes. Same example applies to commercial values of about $1 million and also residential values. Now for the more interesting example, a home with changing property values, which is more realistic. Again, the 18.3 cumulative change over four years. The property taxes, as you can see on those particular parcels, is increasing over time. However, the increases are quite modest. Again, those are mitigated by the overall increase to our property base. At this point, we've fulfilled all of our statutory obligations in our truth and taxation hearing, and it is now time for a period of public comment.
If members of the public that are residents of Edina have a question about any of the tax information, you're welcome to ask a question. We have a microphone, and you can raise your hand.
When can we ask questions about the School Board's decisions?
There's no opportunity for that.
Not without telling our children?
No.
We're not allowed to ask about our children?
No, and you're out of order, so I'm going to have to ask you to be quiet. Are there any questions about the truth and taxation? Are you a resident of Edina?
I am.
Yep.
Can I come up to my microphone?
Yep.
Hi, my name's Eva Hagianis. I live at 5608 St. Andrews Avenue, about three blocks away from here. Okay, to be fair, I don't have any questions about taxes.
I'm going to have to roll you out of order.
I'm so disappointed to be from Edina. I am so disappointed.
You're okay. If you don't stop talking, we're going to have to take a recess. So I need you to stop talking, or we're going to have to stop the meeting. We're going to have to take a recess.
I'm a resident.
Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. Thank you.